At 6:30, if you can all join me in the pledge.
Pledge of allegiance to our United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite and just as.
So, the first one, citizen's statement and petitions. I don't know if we have anybody else, but I do kind of have a question, Lonnie, and it's, I probably should have kept putting the, you know, the rock the block thing on the agenda, and I didn't, and I will. But I've seen a few people post things on Facebook about it, and I was wondering if you could, just keep us know what's going on.
Absolutely. So, the venue has changed from downtown to more inner field. So that's the big change. It's the, some of the big reasons were, after speaking with the chief, that trying to close the four roads was a really big dilemma the last time. It requires a lot of staff, so the employees don't really get a chance to enjoy the event because they're constantly working, right? So this will allow us, we don't have to close any roads at all. We're talking about trolley company that the, that the sort of commission works with to do the trolley tour, the historical trolley tour. So we're going to get three trolleys. We're going to do, have two of them continuing to shuttle people from the field here for parking, additional parking. And also, the third one is going to be used by them. They're actually going to do that historical tour throughout the day, so people can, that can use that and see the, go on that tour. And then at the end of the event, that third one will be used for the, to try to flood the people out, because there'll be a lot more people probably trying to leave at that moment. It will end with the fireworks. There's going to be, we've, we're doing this company called Parky, and they are supplying, they have a bunch of different, like, little events. There's the, the bull, like, the, because we're not really on a cattle bull, it's on the, the, like, a blow up thing. There's going to be bouncy houses and all kinds of different events for kids and family stuff that there's, that the local businesses can sponsor one if they'd like to pay for it. We're just, if any, a petition letter, I'll get that out to everybody, especially your board too. And I just finalized that, it's going to be going out to all the businesses where we're, we've talked to the event dragon, they're going to advertise it on the, I believe during movies. There's, we've got so far about fifteen committed food vendors, whether they're food trucks or local businesses that will have a food table. I'm working on to get, again, the second one, there's one, those ones. Let's do it. And then, so we've also got, we've entered a stage, a medium sized stage, they call it, but it comes with a production person that will also, because they're the Peach Eaters, I don't know if you guys have ever heard of Peach?
Sure.
They're a local band, but pretty big deal local band, that was more of an Allman Brothers cover band. They're going to be the, the, the end of the, the night feature. There's some other local bands that will play throughout the day, we're going to try to fill those slots, so there'll be music all day, we've got a big tent that you'll be able to sit under to eat and what, what, whatnot, so that you can, it is a hot sun day, which we hope is at least a decent sun day, right? That there will be a place for that. Or to, we were commenting, parking, all kinds of different, all, all those little things that, that, you know, you don't think of at the beginning are all starting to come to fruition now. There's going to be a cornel tournament put on by the Brothers of the Brush, which, which should be great. And then there's also, we're right now just getting in touch with the, like, the youth softball, baseball, see what they, they want to do for events on the fields, and we're going to open snack shops, we'll have them to be part of that, with just one at each end, the food will be more than dirt bought, we'll be parked now, so. And then the end of the night, so it's going to end with fireworks.
And what's the date?
Yeah, September tenth, starting around two in the afternoon, and it will go to, we're assuming their fireworks are nine, nine thirty-ish, depending on the actual sundown at that.
So it's going to be at the, in the field across from the beach?
Actually, yeah, exactly, yep.
And, oh, I know at one point we talked about a banner, have, are you still thinking about?
Yeah, so they're getting a banner together, and Alan will help with that across the, from the town hall across to the pole or whatever.
Over here.
Right, just put a banner here, up in the, up in the air, so you'll see it driving through. We're going to get the signage all made up, so that we can get out to all the local businesses. Hopefully, we're also going to, I gotta talk to Tiki Pucci, I haven't talked about it yet, but hoping that they can do something at the circus, maybe hand out a flyer to everybody as they buy tickets or something. And if he can get there, what WMRC might be able to do for us. And I believe that also the town prior is going to be helping us out this way.
Do you, no, I, I, I believe, you know, prior to the election, we had taken a vote to support it. And we've got monies left over from the 350th, right?
Yeah.
As access. Is there anything else that we need to do at this point?
So I, I just sent an email to Jody and to Kim to sit down to find out how we get the money and how the money goes out, and then I think that we can act on that, or maybe we can come to, if we need to, to see the best way of life. We wanted to find out the best, biggest way to do it. So, and then the next meeting, also I've requested a meeting with Fire Chief, please Chief, we're, next Monday, we're actually going to do, the meeting is going to take place at the site, if anybody wants to come. Also, would you guys like to be added to the, the calendar, but if there are meetings we're now doing back at the police station, in the meeting room, but you can remote in and, and participate? So I'll add you guys on, if you want to.
Sure.
The meeting, please do, and we're looking for, now that we're starting to get all of that big stuff out of the way, it's really starting, we're, we're going to need, going to need help right now, so it's going to, so I'll definitely add everybody, we'll take all the help we can get. And if anybody wants to be on, let me know, we'll, we'll add you to the invite, and we'll welcome to come to join the meeting.
All right. That's great, thanks, thanks for the update. All right, the next corresponds to the board, consider support of the Blackstone River Watershed Needs Assessment Report. Is it, is there somebody here who wants to speak to this?
Hi, it's Anne Mazur. The Landers Committee wanted to have Stephanie do her presentation for the select board. Stephanie is the Program Manager, Research Scientist at Clark University for the Blackstone Watershed Collaborative. And Stephanie's been very helpful to Mendon over the years, she's helped us integrate low impact development techniques to our bylaws, and she also helped us become an MVP community, and that is where we got the funding to do the town campus project. So she has another initiative, and we would like to hear about it.
Thanks, welcome.
Thanks so much. So my name is Stephanie. If I'm able to just share my screen here, I will put up this, this brief presentation, hopefully it comes up here. And I'm also, tonight I have my intern Katie Lyming here with me, so she's going to kick off this first few slides of the presentation, and then I will jump in, and I'm happy to answer any questions you have at the end.
Hi, everyone, thanks so much for having us. As Steph mentioned, my name's Katie, I'm a current graduate student at Clark University, interning with the collaborative. We're here today to ask for the town of Mendon to support a resolution which would support the Blackstone River Watershed Needs Assessment Report and the Blackstone Watershed Collaborative, appreciate the efforts of all the groups involved in its creation and continued maintenance, and intend to include these priority actions into local municipal goals as relevant, such as open space and client resiliency planning. So Stephanie's going to explain more about what that means later, but to start off with some context, this is a map of the Blackstone River watershed. The Blackstone River is forty-eight miles long with its headwaters up near Worcester and empties out into, eventually into the Secoak River and then into Narragansett Bay, dropping over four hundred, four hundred feet along its length. The watershed covers almost five hundred square miles with thirty-nine communities and two states. Also, very importantly, and I'm just having a little bit of an internet connection here, but quite importantly, we would like to recognize that the Blackstone River watershed has been under centuries of careful land stewardship from the indigenous population sharing the lands. The word Nipmuck actually means freshwater people, and as you can see from the map on the side, the Nipmuck people steward the majority of the Blackstone watershed, but also stewarding it are the Pokonawat Nation, the Mashpee Wampanoag Tribe, and the Narragansett Indian Tribe. And here in the left-hand corner, you'll see two links to films, one, Paketwag, where the river bends, was put on by Holy Cross, exploring the contributions of the Nipmuck Nation to their historic and continued stewardship of the land. And Kitikuk speaks, which is the Native American word for the Blackstone, meaning Great Tidal River. Since, since then, the Industrial Revolution had really, has really used the elevation change of the Blackstone to industrial advantage, and the Blackstone River was channelized and outfitted with canals and dams powering lots of cotton mills in the region. And this became, this became known as America's hardest working river, the Blackstone. However, once the, once the cotton mills became less of an economic kingpin, the Blackstone was also known as America's most polluted river, thanks in large part to dams and polluted sediments. So these are just some of the historic contributions that has made the Blackstone what it is today. So now Stephanie will tell us about current issues.
Thanks, Katie. So over the past fifty years, the water's gotten a lot cleaner, thanks in part to the Clean Water Act, which we're actually celebrating the fiftieth anniversary of this year in 2022. So this is just looking at the reduction in things like nutrients, nitrogen loading in the river, and the large amount of open space that we do have still within this watershed. We have a very industrialized upper part in Worcester and a lower part in Sanjul Falls, Moon Socket, but in the middle, including in towns like Mendon, we have a lot of really great open space that's playing a really important role in cleaning that water. But over the past few years and, and moving forward, we are seeing that current challenges are really growing. So on the left is a map of the impaired waterways in the Blackstone watershed, so you see a lot of pink and orange there, so we are impacted, and a lot of this comes from the impervious surfaces. So once we hit over about ten percent of impervious surface, water quality starts to be impacted and, and decrease, and areas like Worcester are actually over forty percent impervious surfaces, which is all kind of running down. And as much as we have an opportunity to reduce that within each of our own communities, we're going to be improving that water quality. So climate change is really exacerbating these challenges. When we increase those impervious surfaces, again, that water is not soaking up into our groundwater, which can be a significant problem, not only for runoff into our streams and waterways bringing in nutrients, but also increasing temperatures running off of those, creating flashy systems so that water runs off all at once. You have a lot of water, and then it doesn't go back into the groundwater supply, it just kind of runs off somewhere else, so then we also have exacerbated droughts and drinking water shortages. Some of our communities, your neighbors in Uxbridge and Millville, for instance, are already seeing some private wells go dry, and we are in a drought right now, a mild to moderate drought in this watershed. So this is really a, a big challenge that can be quite an economic challenge to our communities as well. We also know that this region is part of the sprawl frontier as identified by Mass Audubon's Losing Ground Document, which they publish every few years looking at land use changes. And we saw that in 2020 census, Worcester was the fastest growing city in New England and hit over two hundred thousand people. We're seeing population gains not only in our urban areas, but also in our rural areas. Not sure if that's something that you guys are experiencing, but we really want to make sure that we have plans in place, both in our land use regulations and otherwise, to make sure that we're being careful about how we're expanding into the future. We know people will need to move into our communities, they're really beautiful, wonderful places. I've spent a lot of time in Mendon, just as, as Anne said, and we want to make sure we have enough housing in a smart way, that we're not expanding those impervious surfaces, but thinking ahead in protecting some of our natural systems. We know that healthy communities really do depend on a healthy watershed and healthy rivers, whether it's people coming into our communities for recreation and tourism benefits, knowing that physical and mental health is so important. During COVID, we really saw people getting outside when they couldn't get anywhere else and kind of, you know, calming themselves by taking a walk or going along our, our waterways. Our built infrastructure both impacts our waterways and also is impacted by, think about things like culverts, I know that was identified as something important for the town of Mendon to look at. And when we have these things of flooding and a pipe or culvert that's only so big, it can really be impacted and have that roadway collapse, for instance, creating health and safety concerns, which also affects our transportation systems and our municipal services having to go out and rescue some of these folks. So all of this kind of connects in together, and we're trying to make the point that if we think ahead and implement some of these smart land use changes, or smart land use regulations, which Mendon has taken a really great step forward on, we can avoid some of these costs, and also keep in mind where our most vulnerable populations are within each of our communities and ensure that we're not leaving them behind. I know that Mendon is not part of an EJ community as mapped here, but it is important to note that these impacts are not felt in an equitable, equitable way. Some of our cities and, and rural areas are being hit again and again, whether it's looking at heat islands, tree cover, low tree cover, high asthma rates, high flooding impacts, water quality impairments, et cetera. Again, thinking about our land use is affecting each of these things again and again. When we saw, through the Narragansett Bay estuary programs, or part of the larger Narragansett Bay watershed, we saw that there was historically a lack of participation from a lot of the communities in this area and a lack of projects and funding. On the left is a map from the SNET program, which is an EPA funded program, over the past five years, where we have one project, and on the right is DER, which is the Division of Ecological Restoration, again, one or two projects in the past five years. And we said, well, why is that the case? So the Narragansett Bay estuary program did two years of outreach, and they found that it wasn't because there was a, you know, people didn't care, or we had poor staff. I mean, you guys are so lucky to have someone like Anne Mazur in your community, she is such a champion. When, when people say local champion, she's the first one I think about. She's part of every land use board and, and the Conservation Commission and Planning Board, et cetera, really involved and understands this stuff, and it's just really a lack of capacity. A lot of communities have volunteer staff, they don't have the time and expertise to really think about a lot of these environmental issues. So, the Narragansett estuary program put together this needs assessment report. They had eight meetings and hundreds of people and organizations and government agencies participate, and what they ended up with was identifying several goals that were shared among many different municipalities. So things like maintenance of our waterways, expanding our bike way and greenway, making sure that we have equitable access to waterways and recreational opportunities, the growing water chestnut, which is an invasive water chestnut issue, increased need for land protection, regulations that really encourage these cost-effective, nature-based solutions that I've been talking about, the need to recognize developers that are doing the right thing, and towns that are doing the right thing, creating a green jobs program that focuses on maintenance, which has been identified as a primary barrier to municipalities often implementing some of this work. So why can't we plant a rain garden? Well, it won't get maintained. Maximizing effectiveness of the really great long-term monitoring program that we have within this region, the Blackstone River Coalition has been monitoring our water quality on both the main stem of the river, as well as several of its tributaries in many communities, over the past nineteen years now. And they have a lot of data, but they don't have the capacity to share a lot of that information, so we're trying to assist them as well. And then this idea of approving, improving aquatic connectivity, I mentioned culverts, they often are collapsing or being impacted by severe storms, and it also affects our fish passage, so fish aren't able to jump up into some of these areas, which reduces this, this connectivity and, and hinders populations. So what the Blackstone Watershed Collaborative was established for is, we meet monthly, and we talk about how there are grant opportunities out there that we can assist communities, we ask municipalities what we can offer in terms of technical assistance, and really try and prioritize projects that can help multiple communities fill in the capacity gaps that we have, and look at a regional impact and regional assistance in this area that just hasn't had as much help lately. We also provide a centralized place to meet and share information, and also celebrate our successes. So I know Mendon has done a great job, and I know your town, you're putting in a lot of low impact development at your town center, so things like creating case studies on that would be a way to, to share about information and the successes. I mentioned that 2022 is the fiftieth anniversary of the Clean Water Act, and it's also the fiftieth anniversary of a program Zap the Blackstone. That was in nineteen seventy-two, and it was the largest one-day regional environmental cleanup in US history. So ten thousand people got together and they removed ten thousand tons of trash from the river. This is when they were taking out school buses and shopping carts and cars and appliances. So we are luckily not quite as bad now, although I have seen some shopping carts up in Blackstone in the river. But in celebration of that fiftieth anniversary, we wanted to do a lot of, a couple other events. So one is a cleanup and greenup, we're encouraging folks to get together, you can go to this website, it's at theblackstone.com. And if there are particular sites within your community that you could use help, whether it's a cleanup or tree planting, storm drain stenciling, maybe it's, you know, cutting down invasive species, we'd love for you to sign up and say, hey, we need volunteers, and then others can go up and volunteer their assistance and get matched with your project. We also are having a celebration on September tenth, and inviting everybody to come down to Pawtucket, Rhode Island, this will be more of like a music and food festival kind of thing, getting everybody together, and we'll have a lot of congressional speakers there as well, celebrating our successes. We're also doing a Blackstone Commons project where we are paddling, we might be a little bit insane to do this, but we are paddling the entire river. So we're going and starting in Worcester, we're going all the way down to Providence, Rhode Island, on the Blackstone, and then the Secoak River, and we're highlighting the challenges of the river and the watershed that I've talked about here today, and hopefully identifying opportunities to work together and improve that as well. So on August eleventh, we're going to have a kickoff in Worcester. On August twelfth, we have a family fun event right next door to you in Uxbridge at the Riverbend Farm from three to seven PM, we'd love to have you come. And then on the last day, on August fourteenth, down in Providence, Narragansett Brewery is going to be hosting an event for us, and it'll be a celebration, and we'll have some speakers there as well, to highlight, again, this opportunity to work together. I always want to mention this, that there is assistance not only through the Blackstone Collaborative, but through one of our partners, the SNET Network, they offer technical assistance on bylaw review, project feedback, and financing and funding. So if there's a specific idea of, or project that you have, but you're not sure where to start or need financing for it, they can have some great resources as well. The Blackstone Collaborative has worked not only at the local level to try and provide assistance to communities, but we're also trying to take what we hear from these communities and ensure that it's incorporated at a higher level of state and regional documents. So for instance, I'm a part of the Steering Committee for the Central Mass Regional Planning Agency's 2050 Plan. I serve on the Nature Based Solutions Working Group through Mass ECAN, the Ecosystem Climate Adaptation Network, as well as the statewide climate change assessment working group, which is writing the new version of the State Hazard Medication and Climate Adaptation Plan. So if there are things that you feel like aren't being represented, or, you know, Mendon doesn't get its dues, please, please, please let me know, and I would love to make sure that your challenges and your, you know, local priorities are being represented there. So again, this resolution really is just acknowledging the work that's been done in the river, appreciating the, the efforts of, of getting everybody together, creating this needs assessment report, and seeing that what has been identified within that report is also relevant to your community and hoping to include some of these priority actions into a lot of the things that you're doing. And I feel like, you know, this is an easy one for Mendon because you have been really involved, and you have folks like Anne who get it and make these connections and, and modify your land use regulations, et cetera. So I'd be happy to answer any questions for you if you have them, and thank you so much for taking the time to listen tonight.
Anybody on the board have any questions for our speakers?
We're having an event on September tenth, we're going to need you to include that.
I thought there was a conflict there, yeah, right. We can maybe have them come up here and do it up here, yeah.
A question, Anne, and maybe to Lonnie, in terms of the master plan, where this is driving forward-looking actions, do we need to specifically weave what we're talking about here in, specifically into the master plan, the land use chapter, or is it already there? I feel like I've, I've seen it, but I, I wonder if you want to call it up more formally on what we're involved in here?
Yeah, I mean, I think a lot of these topics are covered, but it's not a bad idea to kind of see if it coordinates, you know, well with the resolution.
When I thought, go ahead, no, go ahead.
I was just going to say, if it's helpful for me to review a chapter, please let me know, and I'm happy to do that.
Just when I, when you talked about Zap the Blackstone, there was a gentleman named Everett Mata that we had met, when I say we, Kevin Rudden and Ken O'Brien and myself were very involved in scouting, our kids are involved in scouting, and we actually went camping down there on the bike path in either Cranston or Pawtucket. And we actually spent a weekend in canoes pulling tires and all kinds of things out of the river down at that old drive-in. And, and Mr. Mata was very involved in the Zap the Blackstone, and I'm just wondering if he's still around, but that was about fifteen years ago, but we, we, people in Mendon, especially the scout troops, really supported this throughout the years.
Right. That's wonderful to hear. There's actually, you know, opportunity to share your, your memories and, and your participation, so if you go to the website, that's one of the things they ask for is sharing some of the work that you've done, so we'd love to hear from you.
Okay, so are you looking for us to read this into the record and adopt it?
Anne, is that something that we need to read into the record?
Well, I think that's up to the select board, the, the Landers Committee supported it and signed it, and we just thought it would have more authority if the select board also signed it. It's helpful for if, let's say, the Blackstone Collaborative wants to write a grant to say, you know, all these towns in the watershed support this resolution, and, and it's all things that Mendon does support, so.
All right, has everybody had a chance, all the board members had a chance to read this?
I'm curious, so you mentioned other towns will also be doing this, where, like, our neighboring towns, for example, have they already gone through this process, or are we leading the way?
Yeah, good question. So we're working in both Massachusetts and Rhode Island, and I think we've had about nine other communities pass this so far, including several in Rhode Island, as well as Millbury, Massachusetts, Grafton, Massachusetts. We have gotten support from the Conservation Commission in Uxbridge, in Boylston, Upton, so quite a few.
So, since we've all read it, rather than reading the whole thing, I'm just going to read the, the last two, the two sections that say, now therefore be it resolved by the town of Mendon as follows, section one, the town of Mendon supports the Blackstone River Watershed Needs Assessment Report, and the Blackstone Watershed Coalition appreciates the efforts of all the groups involved in its creation and continued maintenance, and intends to include these priority actions into local municipal goals as relevant, such as open space and climate resiliency planning, and section two, this resolution shall become effective immediately upon its passage by the Mendon Select Board. So I'll be looking for a motion to support this.
I move to support the Blackstone River Watershed Needs Assessment Report.
All right, any other discussion? All those in favor?
All right.
It's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much for having me tonight.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, we have two executive session issues to deal with, so. At this point, executive session purpose three, pursuant to Mass General Law, we're going to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining, so I move to enter into executive session purpose three, pursuant to Mass General Law 30A, section twenty-one A three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If If in an open meeting, if in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, Town Hall Union, and Purpose 6, to consider the purchase, exchange, lease, and value of real property discussing in an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on negotiating position of the public body, 49 Milford Street. We have a roll call vote. Morally, aye?
Before you go into that, if I may, a couple of questions, sir, at this point where you talk about us.
Yeah, would you, yes. Do you want to, do you want to, you guys want to call your meeting to order?
Well, I want to find out what it is we're going into Executive. And just heard you say this is a function of negotiating. So what I'd like to know is what it is that we're negotiating.
Well, it's, it's, again, it's for collective bargaining. This is the letter that you sent. Did you get a copy of this?
Yeah, I know about it, yeah.
Okay, good. So it's to discuss this and to have our town council, who negotiated this, was explain this to the board, since you sent the letter, this can answer that.
But that's a negotiation. What are we going to negotiate? Negotiating being given and taken. There's, I don't see any. You want to discuss it? We can discuss it. We can discuss it in open session. So I don't know the function.
Well, it's not, okay, well, first of all, it's not an option to, it's not your option to decide. I mean, you can choose not to go stick around for the executive session. We can have council discuss it with us. We'd like you to be here so he can explain it, but it can have a detrimental effect on bargaining because it has to do with the management side of union negotiations. It has to do with a contract. So it's up to you whether you stick around or not.
I do not believe that it's negotiation. I don't think it's proper. And I think that anything that that has to do with, because that was answering a letter that was sent out. So, you know, the answer is no. So for that reasons.
Okay, well, so you would rather, so you'd rather discuss this in an open meeting?
Absolutely, yes.
Okay.
But it's not.
Well, I'd ask. Well, no, it's, it's to go into executive session, but if you want to discuss it in an open meeting, if, I don't know, I would ask council which, how you feel about that, Mike.
You have the right to enter into the executive session, discuss strategy, negotiations.
Right.
Detrimental, and that's why I brought it into executive session.
Right.
We invited the Board of Assessors here to be present with that because the matters that you would like to discuss involve collective bargaining. It's not just negotiations. It's about the impact that certain actions will have on your, with your clerical union, and that's what the purpose of that executive session was.
Yeah, okay. Still, not having any, any information beforehand other than being sent the agenda.
Well, you had this.
There's ill-proper preparation involved in this, and I will not participate.
Okay. Well, you guys can walk out and we'll do what we, we'll talk about it and then you, all right, thanks. Thank you. And then we'll, yes. Yes, yes. Yeah, we still have to vote. So a motion been made and I think second. So we need. All right. We'll, and we'll reconvene in a little while. Yeah.
Sorry.
Hey Lonnie, so do we just stay in line and you're going to go blank?
Yes, I think we're just, I think we're just going to leave and wait for the room. And then everybody will stay and then we'll jump back on in just a few minutes when this is over, okay?
All right, thank you. For the second one, for the second part, yeah.
Anyway, so we're going to create the room, yeah.
So we staying here or are we moving?
Okay, just wait one second, Cindy. You'll automatically be moved in with us.
Awesome.
Just, I'm sorry, create a room.
Motions, you know, to provide funding on the state level because the state's talking about mandating every city and town to do this. And, you know, at a time when there's an unbelievable surplus, you would expect that the state would fund, you know, the cost to do what frankly we've already done.
Thank you. I was like, because it didn't make the deadline. I was like, that's crazy.
They suggested the states putting an unfunded mandate out there?
Yes.
Okay.
...
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, just in case you know, I'm just. And. Lights up. Sure. Abby, who's K O's that? I always forget the name of that guy.
It's a common name.
No, it's like every week, though.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just jump out of order here. We're gonna take appointment of heavy equipment operator. Alan, if you do wanna.
So I'd like to introduce Ron Carson.
Come right up to the table.
Yeah. If I just have the mic.
How they doing? Ron Carson, he's a candidate for heavy equipment operator. We went through the interview process and we picked him. I think he'll be a good fit. Nice, young, strong kid that can.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Yeah, wouldn't.
I know he helped out also further ado. I move to appoint Ronald Carson to the full-time position of heavy equipment operator for the highway department at a rate of twenty-one fifty-five per hour.
Second. Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
And he just informed me tonight he can even start Monday. So I just gotta get together with. I just gotta get together with Shelley to do the paperwork and we'll be good to go.
Awesome. Alright. Thank you, guys. Thank you very much. Sweet.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, Alan.
Take care. Can we just do this other appointment? Joyce Gilmore?
I moved to appoint Joyce Gilmore to the Board of Health effective today, July twenty, twenty twenty-two, to extend until the May twenty twenty-three annual final election scheduled for May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye. Let's game.
Aye.
Aye. Alright. Thank you very much. So let's talk about the Town Hall Campus Project. Do you want to give us an update, Kim?
So I spoke with Dan this afternoon and we were in contact today with U E L about the start date for the overall space. They had to give fourteen days notice for the site and so they actually can begin working on August first, so we should look for them to start mobilizing in that time. We are waiting on, we have one bid in for the electrical work, we're waiting on a second, but it's professional service, so we can go either which way, but we're just gonna make sure that the numbers are right. And then the well should, is all set to go. The initial groundwork was done and that is, is moving forward. So that has been rapidly progressing. The library, as you know, the painting is done. I just have to do a final walkthrough with Fox. That came in, was under budget for both projects. And then if you didn't see the front door, they are able to actually peel, strip it down and restore the wood, so it looks excellent over there. And then the last phase downstairs, the furniture is all ordered, should be delivered in September, depending on when the offices are done. And then we just have, Danny said he's gonna be done on this side. Paint is coming in this week, just, just on one side. We're gonna do a larger project in the back for November for the ADA accessibility around the elevator, going back to more of the nineteen ninety-nine design of the backspace back there, opening that up. And then the other side will be the last step, once we see what's in that wall. All at the same time, right?
So now the ADA piece. We're ready to do that, because then the outside access will be done by then, correct?
Right, so there is a big question mark. So I've had John Erickson over here, we've been taking a look at all the fire doors and all the, all the locations. I mean, there's a real concern with the staircase in the back, obviously, in the current way in which the elevator door opens, so we have to take a look at that. Those walls that are prohibiting the space and the light in that backspace that were added, you know, twenty-plus years ago, really aren't serving a purpose over there. And so there's been discussion with historic about opening that up and turning it into an alcove and putting historic things in there. So when you come into the town hall, you're coming in on that side door, there's seating there, the bathrooms are there, there's cabinets there that contain historical artifacts. You know, it's a, it's a greeting, but we definitely need to think about, once this campus is done on this side door, how we enhance that entrance in the back that basically, you know, in between the two buildings, because we definitely will be, in addition to these spaces on the side, we will definitely have more foot traffic towards that backside.
Can you clarify sides as you were going through, like what you meant by this side, that side?
Yeah, this space right here. So most of these, most of the, a lot of people will park here, but we're gonna still have a lot more traffic over here. So this back staircase.
Can I, can I just ask, do we have a building to pull this up? Share it?
This is, this is a project, this is a November project. This is a, we need to have.
What was the last, you referenced the last side after you mentioned the ADA work. Which side are you referring to there?
This side, inside. But this piece right here, which would, would have been next, I'm gonna phase out till, you know, we have somebody come in and professionally take a look.
And then the left-hand side, the left-hand side, that side, that will be done when?
Should be done by November, December.
So that's underway?
Yeah, this one, I mean, it really depends on the logistics of what's in the wall, what's in this wall, much like this side. I'm sure you've seen that with the tin ceilings. Not anticipating that on that side, I'm not anticipating wood floors either, but it's hard to know. And then there's basically electrical, all of these weird spots in this wall, so it's hard to tell. But, you know. It shouldn't, most of this side should be cosmetic once we get there.
Left side is underway, the back ADA work is pushed off.
Yeah, I really want someone to come through and really take a better look at the design back there, particularly around that staircase. And I mean, I think that's, you know, maybe it's like, if we come in under budget on the whole campus, then maybe we'll have some money to also, you know, but we have to take a look at that, because that staircase is.
Very strange, actually. Yeah, there's, if you've been in that other door, where the well is.
Well, that's the thing, because of the well and the elevator, I think it really, they.
There's probably a much better use now that we can get rid of the well, of how to even access the building, maybe from that side or another set of stairs.
Right, initially when Kathy and I and Lita just walked the inside, coming in the door to do the alcove, we were just thinking small alcove, basically, just in that side. But then we have this thing we have to look at, plus that might as well open up the whole thing, so.
There's a lot of wasted space.
Yeah, there is a lot of wasted space.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I got another problem.
Alright, well.
Mr. Jimmy can open up.
Oh, that's what I meant. Right, right.
Is there a fourth kind available for the project?
For which project?
The interior of the building.
There's three different designs that were created in the twenty sixteen study, about different locations of possible office space. But like we found when going into the finance side, I mean, it's, it's difficult to know the exact measurements of each particular space because of the conditions and what's in the walls. So like on finance, the original plan, when we were doing those on that side, we didn't originally intend to eliminate all of the walls in, in the interior entirely until the ceiling was discovered. And so then we had to pivot the plan a bit to incorporate that ceiling.
You've got three work, you've got three plans you're working off of, and as you come across things, you may be altering the plan.
Right, I mean, the concept was.
So, so it's yes, there is.
Yeah, finance on one side, offices on the other, right? One main window where someone comes in the building, that was the point, one of the plans in twenty sixteen. So, you know, switch, we, like I told you, we switched sides. Window would have been down this end, but we pivoted to that end because we started using the ramp and the clerk moved down some of the side. So, but the clerk moving off the floor, then moving next door, all part of that plan.
Yeah, but to, to answer the question, yes, there's actually three plans that are out there that are being used as a starting point.
Right.
And you're adjusting based on what.
Danny goes in, peels down the wall, and then we say, what is the condition of this space?
And have, have you discussed those different plans with the, with the different staff downstairs?
So that, that's plan was actually generated from interviews with staff in twenty sixteen, and their feedback is in those plans. In addition to, I walked in twenty nineteen and have notes from my meetings with staff downstairs about what they thought the building needed, because we took advantage of the pandemic in order to move forward. And so I have the notes from that as well. So, yes, multiple times. Plus, most staff have come.
Yeah, just in case, you know. Who's K O's? I almost forget the name of that guy.
It's a common name.
No, it's like every week though.
Yeah.
Okay, let's just jump out of order here. We're gonna take appointment of a heavy equipment operator. Alan, if you do wanna.
I'd like to introduce Ron Carson. Come right up to the table.
Yeah.
If I just have the mic.
How they doing? Ron Carson, he's a candidate for heavy equipment operator. We went through the interview process and we picked him. I think he'll be a good fit. Nice, young, strong kid that can.
Welcome, Mark.
Thank you.
May I have a motion?
Yeah, wouldn't. I know he helped out also further ado. I move to appoint Ronald Carson to the full-time position of heavy equipment operator for the highway department at a rate of twenty-one fifty-five per hour.
Second.
Motion made in second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
It's unanimous. Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Thank you.
And he just informed me tonight, he can even start Monday.
Well.
So I just gotta get together with, uh, I just gotta get together with Shelley to do the paperwork and we'll be good to go.
Awesome. Alright.
Thank you, guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Have a good night.
Appreciate it, guys.
Thank you, Alan.
Can we just do this other appointment?
Yep.
Joyce Gilmore?
I moved to appoint Joyce Gilmore to the Board of Health effective today, July twenty, twenty twenty-two, to extend until the May twenty twenty-three annual final election scheduled for May sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye. Let's game.
Aye.
Aye. Alright.
Excellent.
Thank you very much. So let's talk about the town hall campus project. Do you wanna give us an update, Kim?
So I spoke with Dan this afternoon and we were in contact today with U E L about the start date for the overall space. They had to give fourteen days' notice for the site, and so they actually can begin working on August first, so we should look for them to start mobilizing in that time. We are waiting on, we have one bid in for the electrical work, we're waiting on a second, but it's professional service, so we can go either which way, but we're just gonna make sure that the numbers are right. And then the well should, is all set to go. The initial groundwork was done and that is, is moving forward, so that has been rapidly progressing. The library, as you know, the painting is done. I just have to do a final walkthrough with Fox. That came in, was under budget for both projects, and then if you didn't see the front door, they are able to actually peel, strip it down and restore the wood, so it looks excellent over there. And then the last phase downstairs, the furniture is all ordered, should be delivered in September, depending on when the offices are done, and then we just have, Danny said he's gonna be done on this side. Paint is coming in this week, just, just on one side. We're gonna do a larger project in the back for November for the ADA accessibility around the elevator, going back to more of the nineteen ninety-nine design of the backspace back there, opening that up. And then the other side will be the last step, once we see what's in that wall. All at the same time, right?
So now the ADA piece. We're ready to do that, because then the outside access will be done by then, correct?
Right, so there is a big question mark. So I've had John Erickson over here, we've been taking a look at all the fire doors and all the, all the locations. I mean, there's a real concern with the staircase in the back, obviously, in the current way in which the elevator door opens, so we have to take a look at that. Those walls that are prohibiting the space and the light in that backspace that were added, you know, twenty-plus years ago, really aren't serving a purpose over there, and so there's been discussion with historic about opening that up and turning it into an alcove and putting historic things in there, so when you come into the town hall, you're coming in on that side door. There's seating there, the bathrooms are there, there's cabinets there that contain historical artifacts, you know, it's a, it's a greeting, but we definitely need to think about, once this campus is done on this side door, how we enhance that entrance in the back that basically, you know, in between the two buildings, because we definitely will be, in addition to these spaces on the side, we will definitely have more foot traffic towards that backside.
Can you clarify sides, as you were going through, like, what do you meant by this side, that side?
Yeah, this space right here, so most of these, most of the, a lot of people will park here, but we're gonna still have a lot more traffic over here, so this back staircase.
Can I, can I just ask, do we have a building to pull this up? Share it?
This is, this is a project, this is a November project. This is a, we need to have.
What was the last, you referenced the last side after you mentioned the ADA work. Which side are you referring to there?
This side, inside, but this piece right here, which would, would have been next, I'm gonna phase out till, you know, we have somebody come in and professionally take a look at it.
And then the left-hand side, the left-hand side, that side, that will be done when?
Should be done by November, December.
So that's underway.
Yeah, this one, I mean, it really depends on the logistics of what's in the wall, what's in this wall, it's much like this side, I'm sure you've seen that with the tin ceilings. Not anticipating that on that side, I'm not anticipating wood floors either, but it's hard to know, and then there's basically electrical, all of these weird spots in this wall, so it's hard to tell, but, you know. It shouldn't, most of this side should be cosmetic when we get there.
Left side is underway, the back ADA work is pushed off.
Yeah, I really want someone to come through and really take a better look at the design back there, particularly around that staircase, and I mean, I think that's, you know, maybe it's like, if we come in under budget on the whole campus, then maybe we'll have some money to also, you know. But we have to take a look at that, because that staircase is.
Very strange, actually.
Yeah.
There's, if you've been in that other door, where the well is, you can look.
Well, that's the thing, because of the well and the elevator, I think it really.
I mean, there's probably a much better use now that we can get rid of the well, of how to even access the building, maybe from that side or another set of stairs.
Right, initially when Kathy and I and Linda just walked the inside, coming in the door to do the alcove, we were just thinking small alcove, basically, just in that side, but then we have this thing we have to look at, plus that might as well open up the whole thing, so.
There's a lot of wasted space.
Yeah, there is a lot of wasted space.
Anybody have any questions?
I, I got one.
Alright, well.
Mr. Jimmy can open up.
Oh, that's what I meant, right, right.
Is there a fourth kind available for the project?
For which project?
The interior of the building.
There's three different designs that were created in the twenty sixteen study, about different locations of possible office space, but like we found when going into the finance side, I mean, it's, it's difficult to know the exact measurements of each particular space because of the conditions and what's in the walls. So like on finance, the original plan, when we were doing those on that side, we didn't originally intend to eliminate all of the walls in, in the interior entirely until the ceiling was discovered, and so then we had to pivot the plan a bit to incorporate that ceiling.
You've got three work, you've got three plans you're working off of, and as you come across things, you may be altering the plan.
Right, I mean, the concept was.
So, so it's yes, there is.
Yeah, finance on one side, offices on the other, right, one main window where someone comes in the building, that was the point, one of the plans in twenty sixteen. So, you know, switch, we, like I told you, we switched sides, window would have been down this end, but we pivoted to that end because we started using the ramp and the clerk moved down some of the side, so, but the clerk moving off the floor, then moving next door, all part of that plan.
Yeah, but to, to answer the question, yes, there's actually three plans that are out there that are being used as a starting point, and you're adjusting based on what.
Danny goes in, peels down the wall, and then we say, what is the condition of this space?
And have, have you discussed those different plans with the, with the different staff downstairs?
So, that, that's plan was actually generated from interviews with staff in twenty sixteen, and their feedback is in those plans. In addition to, I walked in twenty nineteen and have notes from my meetings with staff downstairs about what they thought the building needed, because we took advantage of the pandemic in order to move forward, and so I have the notes from that as well, so yes, multiple times, plus, most staff have come to see me multiple times during the project.
And, and this is all in flex, largely because you just don't know until you open up the walls.
Right, we don't know the exact measurements of the space, but the concept is the same, which is provide an additional conference room on the main floor that people can have meetings at and continue to have multiple office spaces. You know, which side they're on and where they were, it is less of a concern, the, like I said in the email, original concept, especially for next door, or when we were, that was so, so long now, that that plan was actually for the fire station before the police station, I mean, it's crazy, but places that have permits and things that are dropped off, right, drive-in, drop-off, right, it was about customer service and efficiency, and so windows were moved towards the main points of entrance for the building, offices that have the most foot track moved towards those locations, that's.
Can you have a question?
Uh, I, I guess I understand that, that back in two thousand and sixteen, there were some rough sketches that were drawn that you guys are aware of, that you had on three options of what things could possibly look like.
And then they were up, and then they were updated in twenty nineteen, and they've been, they've been updated as time has gone on.
Thank you, Paul. Where can I find that? Oh, anyway.
I'm sorry, I don't.
Well, we've got notes.
But.
And, and the short answer is, yeah, we'll get you what exists, sure.
For the last.
Been asking for that, sir.
The last, the last six months.
Well, hey, let me just, let me just be clear, this is, the first time that you talked to me about this is now, and then you sent me an email two days ago, so, yes, sir?
I did send an email a couple of weeks ago, a request for a meeting, but you.
But you didn't say what, right, but, but you didn't say what it was for.
Really, it's like I would have expected you to respond to that.
I did.
No, sir.
I, I have the email, Ken, I sent you an email that said I'll be putting you on the agenda, then you sent me an email back and said that you wanted to be on the agenda, well, okay, well, you know what, that's.
David, uh, when you want to communicate to me, it's Ken O'Brien, a lot of achievements.
Alright, let me just, I, I, I'm not gonna belabor this point, but ten years ago, the town gave town email addresses to all elected officials, appointed officials and employees. And all town business is conducted through those emails. I have your Gmail address, I have your phone, because we've been friends for twenty years. When it comes, well, I would say that the phone works both ways, and in addition to that, anything to do with town business will be on town emails. I, and, and I would say to you, you did say to me in one of your emails that the Gmail address is the only one you have on your phone, and I answered you back, and I said, Will Brand, and we have the, we'll help you load it onto your phone, but either way, I'm not going to send town business emails to your Gmail address, and this is why. The reason that we generated town emails was somebody was asking for information, I was gonna have to turn over my private Gmail account to, to give them information. I'm not doing that. So everybody does everything on the town emails, it's on the server, so that it, when the town clerk, who is actually the one who really pushes this, takes care of these public records requests, they do it all through the server. So as far as your Gmail account, if it comes to town business, I will not be sending emails to your Gmail, but I will send them to your kennel, k o'brien at mendenma.gov. You have your hand up, go ahead.
The idea that, that someone wanted to get anything through the open meeting law, request, public document request, which was done, by the way, twice not long ago for stuff to the assessors office. And, and that person did request it, and they requested it to town experts, and we did all the things necessary to accommodate that.
Right.
Town clerk, told him how much it was gonna cost, and that person didn't pick it up, just stepped away out. Anyway, so the next thing is that if anything going back and forth on town business, who am I communicating to? Gene. Gene, in the assessment.
I, I don't, that has, that has no, look, yeah, sure, go ahead.
So I understand, but I just wanna give it to you from a technical standpoint, because I can. Alright, the law, the law states that we have to keep seven years of records on the engine. The only way to confirm the back and forth of town, of town emails is through that town server. We can't guarantee that you keep your records for seven years on your Gmail that are related just to town business. We can't access your server in a free, of an FOI request, we can't access your Gmail account, even if you have to give us subpoena, I guess, I, I don't even know how you would essentially ask for it, right? Court would have to order it, it would have to be our lawsuit, so that's the reason that the town invested in that, and that's the same with investing in, in the, the meeting software and so on, so.
It's a, it's, you know, it's a town policy, it's public information, yeah, it's a town policy, it's public information, and everybody who is an elected official, an appointed official or employee, is expected to communicate using that, those email addresses. That's it. So, alright, any?
I still don't know anything about these, these meetings, this renovation, the plans, I haven't seen them, I don't know where they are. And I've asked for them, whether it be, I did it through other people, we don't know anything about it, and then last week, last week, Gene asked, what was the last week, the week before, let Gene speak to the, to the issue.
So, I had no concerns, because of course I have no renovation to go without, I've been sitting in the middle room for a long time. I had assumed that the renovations were just coming in sprucy on the offices. I wasn't aware, I saw some walls moving across the hall, but again, it's not my office, I didn't get involved. So it wasn't until like three weeks ago, when the contractor said something, he came up, had a hole in the wall on my office, that I said, why? He said, well, it probably had to go deep, and I said, okay, so. On town administrators out the hallway a couple days later, I went out, we had a very nice conversation, and I just said, you know, can you give me a, and I went to the tour number of the assessors office, she said she didn't know. And I said, okay, fine, just know that, you know, we, we'd like to be spoken to, and these are some certain things we need for our office to specialize in.
But, but just so we're clear, you, you just said you were aware of the, of these renovations, and you, right, right, and, and I know that there were multiple options given, I don't wanna belabor this point, the point is that you wanna be informed about it, you wanna find out about it, and it's a, it's a work in progress, and you will be, as soon as it's figured out.
So, again, I wasn't aware at that time, it's like, hey, here's the options they're not for, some of the things.
Did you reply back with what your concerns were? Okay, well, then it's, then it's, then it's ongoing then. Is, is there any other issue then? If, if, if you're saying you had an issue, and they tell you what the options are, and you sent them an email back and said, these are my issues, and the construction is going on and they're trying to figure it out, what you're telling me is that you've been dealing with it.
Mr. Chair, if, if I may, I mean.
Sure.
Do we need to confirm back, do you want confirmation that you were heard, Gene, that we understand your requirements? Because if it's ongoing, then I think the, the, from my perspective, the bottom line is, if you've set forth specific requirements, and you know, you and I have had a conversation, then I think acknowledging that we understand what they are, and as, as you and I discussed, it may not be the same, but it needs to be the equivalent of to allow you to do your job. Is that fair?
Right, so.
Yeah.
I did, I did read what her, her requests were, and I did come up with another solution that I thought actually met most of those, which is, she, she wants to have a window, she had some safety concerns, and she wants to have a space in order to conduct private meetings, and, you know, I don't have a particular preference about the location, right? The original report stated that she could be in a shared space, and that she had to be near the treasurer collector's office.
I, I just wanna make sure we understand her requirements, number one, right, which we do.
I think I understood them, and to me, the location that fits those requirements the most, the security issues and the window issue, would to be, become part of the finance office, because there's space in there.
Without, without solutioning, I just wanna know that we understand the requirements, because I think even in our conversation, Gene, we said, you cannot digitize documents because it's, you know, sec, you know, but, right. But, right, and I, when we discussed, I said, let's, I, I was gonna say, let's ask Lonnie, how we can secure digital documents.
What's, what, what is confidential, what is considered confidential information?
Anything to do with health and finances.
Health and finances, so, or stolen information.
Personal, well.
So.
All the exemption requests, all the vacant requests.
Was it confidential?
Yeah, absolutely, by state law, because they're talking about.
I didn't know that.
By, by state law.
I Ds.
Okay, well, you know what, I guess, you know.
Back it up for one thing, just 'cause I would say to our I T representative, do we have a means to have, you know, secure files that are not accessible, what?
A one hundred percent.
Right, so I mean, my point is this, it seems like we're going down a path of something can't be done, I might suggest it can be done, might be cost prohibitive, I don't know, but we should at least capture the requirements and see what our solutions are, right?
That's something.
That's, but it, but it's.
We're not talking about gene requests, we're talking about what we need to do to serve our public customers.
Right, and nobody's, nobody's disagreeing with that, I mean, this is a work in progress, and what I'm hearing from this discussion is that this has been an ongoing dialogue for, for several years. You've had conversations with the town administrator, and now, a couple of weeks ago, you were concerned, you walked out in the hallway, you talked to her about it, she gave you three different options, and you came back and said, well, we need to look into this further, so I'm not sure what the issue is.
The three, uh, room in the back, it's, it's a valid option.
I don't, I don't know, but I don't even wanna get into the details here, but, yeah, yeah, I think it.
Let me just explain, I actually think that's a great option, and it's only ten square feet smaller than your current location. No, because you're not including the storage closet in the back, so, and we can, so.
Alright.
Can we?
Alright, no, let's all stop, this is, this, this are details, Ken, please, these are details, but it, it, it doesn't matter, the point, the point is, these are, these are issues that if, if you can't come up with this plan, you need to come back to this board, well, let me, let me finish, Ken.
I'm not, I don't know anything about this.
Anything, well, alright, let me, let me stop you, let me, let me just stop you, I, we were, we were here for, look.
Yeah, right, we don't report to you either, correct?
Look.
We are in recalls.
Hey, hey, okay.
But not because this bill is going off the rails.
Hang, hang on a second, look, you asked for a meeting, we gave you a meeting, we have other issues we discussed, now we're talking about camp, campus update. If you have other particular issues that you wanna discuss with that office downstairs, what I'm gonna direct you to do is deal with the town administrator, back and forth, well, and, and please, show a little bit more respect, Mr. Chairman.
Chairman, I have been trying to communicate to you in the last two weeks over this meeting.
I, I know.
And I feel like it falls on deaf ears.
Well, the reason, I think the reason is I'm answering your town email address.
I get, I get, but I need to communicate to you about the idea of putting assessors inside of the treasurer collector's office, that's a no-no.
Oh, oh, because of, okay, and, and my, and, and I don't, perhaps that's the case, I don't, I honestly don't know, but what, alright, but, but what I'm saying, but please, what I'm saying is, that this is a discussion that can be taken offline, and once the, once this is hammered out, if it needs to be, come back to this board, and we'll approve it, but I, I think, oh, go ahead.
You have a little meeting with town administrator, us, someone else you want, and we get offline, and we can sit and chat, and we can walk through.
Perfect.
What's really going on.
Yes, that's, that's what I was suggesting, so that's great.
It's wild. And a lot of it's tough. Conference room, can I be my. Although the windows have been invaluable, not just.
Okay, and, and again, I'm not. Alright, and, and all I'm saying is, that this is something that, as, as one of your assessors just said, you, you can have in a, in a meeting offline, and that's, that's fine, that's all that needs to happen. Well, I, I, I think you.
So. I, since I'm the only one that keeps doing the timeline, I, it doesn't matter, we can't even determine, and this is what Gene and I spoke about a couple of weeks ago, I don't even know what the layout is going to be officially on that side of the building, until we start getting in there to take it apart.
Right, so.
Ideally, I was trying to get their office as close to the finance office, as was in the report, and near the door, as they want, that's that office right there. The square footage is slightly smaller, but it can still accommodate that space, so to me, that makes the most sense, but I don't have a problem with this office up here, I mean, it's, or I don't even really have a problem with my office downstairs. My, I mean, it doesn't matter, but the point was to, for, for customer service efficiency sake, everybody is on this side, right, that space in the middle has to be gutted, no matter what the end result is, and so.
Can I make a suggestion, Ken?
Temporary space, at least, that everyone is moving.
Let me just, I just want, 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 just, I'd say.
Sure.
At a minimum, let's have an offline meeting.
Right.
To have a discussion, make sure we fully understand the requirements and the, all the wheres, whys, and why it has to be a certain way, right, and, and take that back, I mean, you're limited, I mean, I think overall, town hall efficiency is an overlay to that, so you're gonna drive that strategy while accommodating their needs, right? But you need to have that first sit-down, and, you know, I'd be happy to participate if you.
My only, my only point is that, that offline meeting and the sit-down nee- needs to happen, nothing, nothing constructive is gonna happen in this environment right here until you sit down and discuss it, and that's what needs to happen. Go ahead, Lonnie.
I think we know the requirements, that, that list has been given. I think that the key piece is that, once the temporary move takes place, whether it's slide up to the front, and if, if you wait for finance to be done, moving back, this is all logistics that you can handle, I don't have to give you this information, then we can at least start to pull apart that whole extra space to find out what's even there and available.
Well, that, and, and that's, that's the point, is to move you temporarily, so that we can get that, those walls opened up and, and see, the company can see what can be done, and then with what's, it's kinda like a, like a, like a clean canvas, and then you can sit, right, right.
Whether that wall can come out or not, like that space can be one space, or it has to be two spaces, it's.
So, let me, let me ask you, so everybody, everybody here understands that there is this temporary solution that's required to do any work, and we all need to make that work while we design final, right? That's what we're saying.
Okay.
Okay.
I think the big issue is that we all wanna communicate the right way, and sometimes we don't hear each other, and our concern is to be one hell, should the taxpayer has an efficient global work, and that'd be very good that we're gonna block line, talk to, back to something that's.
Agreed.
I can get.
Alright, thank you very much.
Any idea on the date for that discussion?
Well, you can work that out with.
Look, look, again, I, I, this is just my crappy thing, we have the list, until the temporary move takes place, and we can figure out what that space is, there's, there's nothing in the assess except for this, but your needs, right? Until we know what walls can come out, what's, what's, what's a carrying wall, and what's the chimney.
And you know what, and the, but the, and the.
So again, you can have a, a meeting, but I just think it might be a, a little bit premature.
The one thing I would say, though, the, the idea that D O R has some rules and regulations that I'm not sure, I mean, I'm not aware of, that would be helpful information to know now, right?
Well, what I would, if, if I can just say, when I, when I was elected last year, Gene and I talked about some of these issues, and at this point, there's really further discussion, I, I don't think it needs to take place until they get into that office and take that apart and look at it, and then once it's opened up and we see what the space is, then the town administrator, who runs day-to-day things and has really been given some responsibility with this, will meet with you, and if. some responsibility with this, will meet with you, and if need be, members of this board, but I, I don't think it's necessary, will meet with you and.
Idea, that idea has changed four times, five times. We'll do that.
Great. All right, thanks. You're welcome. Thanks.
Thank you, guys.
And conservation agent, we're passing over that, right?
Well, no, I wanted to just talk about it for a minute because this board hasn't talked about it, and I think we need to make sure we're all aligned. So we, three years ago, I think, or so now, two years ago, we had the resignation of our conservation commission clerk, our admin, okay? And at that time, a discussion was held with the board and with the CONCOM that we should really try to get an agent, and we did that. We got an agent. Unfortunately, it didn't work out. So it's been vacant for a bit. We just re-advertised, and we did get an excellent candidate. The ball is actually in their court about whether or not they want to take us on as part of their additional workload, basically. But, so I just, because we hadn't had the agent, the conservation commission is an advisory board to the select board with statutory authorities, right? Ultimately, you decide what position is that you want there. I mean, quite honestly, we've been lucky to find two people that were qualified. If this one, I mean, we'll, of course, we'll deal with it when it happens. I keep my fingers crossed that she says yes. But if not, we might have to pivot and take a look at something else. I know no one wants to do that, or we can just keep advertising for agent for forever. But just to give you an update on where we're at, and to make sure you're all still aligned with trying to find an agent, that's still the goal, even though, I mean, it's difficult for CONCOM because they need assistance, but it's, this isn't like a very common background.
Right, does, I think, one of the pieces of feedback was that the, is the, is the agent also going to do?
The clerical work, yes, and she understands that.
Okay.
She's never actually done any of that before. She has, she has an admin of her own. But I do think that, which is ultimately my goal over there.
Yep.
That's the future of inspectional services, right? Multiple, cross-trained admins, that's the future. So we do have another vacancy in that same office, which was zoning enforcement officer, which really should have a title change too, because it shouldn't be officer. It needs to be assistant building official, a technical change, and so.
Isn't the building commissioner the actual?
Yes, exactly, and so we need to change the title. So I'm just saying, there is some change happening over there. I mean, as, I mean, I know this is kind of off-topic a little bit, but we also have been interviewing for that junior planner position, which was the other half of that grant that I got last year. And it, so Jack is, is the big piece of it.
That means Jack's leaving.
So we're going to have to talk about that. So the way that I wrote, the way that I wrote the grant, three towns split it. I asked for two years of funding, right, and then we would all, all the three towns committed to funding another year of it. They gave us one of the years, we fund the second year, okay? He started in September, so it's not an actual fiscal year, but you get the idea. He's in the first year, he's wrapping up the first year. So the grant paid for him. It's taken us this long to find the junior planner piece that, that was supposed to be in the second year of the grant, which we are paying for, the three towns pay for the same amount, that he would be phasing out and they would be phasing in? I don't think anybody wants to do that. I think we all want to keep Jack. And I'm going to try to look for solutions to do that to the extent that we can. And we have, he, much like everything else, this is an excellent candidate we got this morning that's interested in this junior planner position, has a background in viewpoint.
Oh, looks like you give me a progress update.
Yeah, so I, I'm not, I have to talk to the other towns about, like, I keeping Jack somehow, like we. So I know I've, I have, I have at least $45,000 that I'd set aside to do our share of this anyway, so it's not a cost issue right now. But I think we want to talk about figuring out how we want to approach it sooner than later, and then fund it in the fall, because this person is available for me to hire now. And I think, and we're not talking a lot, we're talking an intern 10 hours a week, couple thousand dollars, you know, like.
Be better by Jack.
Well, that's the other piece of it. And so I'm just throwing that out there because all three of these things that we're talking about, CONCOM, this, and this person are all in that one space. And so, you know me, all these little light bulbs and things are firing about how can we make something happen over there? And then our new hire, Jack, who's, the other Jack who's over there is excellent. And so, you know, I'm just really excited about what's happening over there. So just keeping you a little bit updated on that, just so I know I'm trying to figure out a way to get another planner in addition, because one isn't enough, right?
On the viewpoint piece, Nathan from my office has gotten all of the board of health documents into. He went, they taught him how to do it from the, from viewpoint.
Yeah.
Dan helped him a little bit just to get rolling, and he's got all the board of health forms in there now. Just waiting for them to all put through them, for through them, so that everything will now be available online.
Yeah.
And then we'll move on to the next bulk that's, that's missing. So we'll be able to have that hold.
I want every single thing possible on there.
So I was very, I thought it was going to be a little quicker.
Yeah, everything on.
After seeing in the backend, it's, yes, kind of a monster. But there's a lot to do, and some of the forms are very big, but there's duplicate data throughout them, so then there was the whole point of, okay, what do we not need to put on here on the next page?
Oh, so you guys fill it.
Because it's already there, and it'll fill, it'll fill the form in on itself, so. Yeah, so there was some, but now that he's got two phones, able to.
Yeah, and just to follow up on the technology piece, again, offline. I think something that would really help us with our decision-making about how we're moving forward on these things, we really need to start tracking how many people are actually coming into the town hall for service, for real. This is a, I mean, we, we make a lot of assumptions, and there are times that are busy during the year, but like, as technology becomes better, and you know how I feel about overhead, I just.
We have door counts.
You know how many times you come into this building and it's empty, right?
Do you want to just know the traffic?
Yeah, I want to know who's coming in, I want to know where they're going.
In the library, in, in Milford. It's just a door count, counts in and comes out. No, it only counts.
No, I mean, to the extent that we can get a better sense, which is, you know, it's, I, I mean, the pandemic has been strange, and I mean, quite honestly, I think there is a real shift post-pandemic about people coming out and people using technology. And the more we pay to expand these things, I mean, we still have to provide that. We're providing services, but just in a different way, and they're being utilized, right?
Do you have the ability to track online usage?
Yeah, I was gonna, I was going to suggest that too, because, you know, a great deal of, there are certainly people that come into the assessors' office and they can't avoid that.
Right.
There are others, thanks, Mike. There are others where there are things that they additionally had to go to the assessors because they couldn't get them online, but what they want, they can get it online now.
I know personally, I always go online for.
Right.
Right, and I think it is generational, we've talked about this, but post-pandemic, because a lot of people had to learn how to do these things online, I mean.
How they demand it.
Right, I mean, it's very quiet in here, so, I mean, besides people dropping off their tax bill. And that's just, you know, the facts, so, you know, I mean, it's, it's more of a budgeting strategy than anything else, but this is the sort of thing you got to look at for the next 10 years, which is.
As we get those forms in there, they're available, there's even less interaction even in the building department, which probably gets the most interaction. So, you know, with trash issues, issues, building problems, anything.
Right, that's what I'm saying.
Viewpoint, you should be easily tracked.
Yes, yes.
Right.
It's, it's all, it's.
So when that go, you've set up the type of information, MIS stuff you want out of that system already?
Yeah, so when, I mean, it's been a couple of years, 2018, right? We did all kinds of reporting about the, just the flow of, like, requests, and who was, where they were going to, and really seeing a generation report. I think we really have the ability, and every time we add one of these modules, I want to say it costs 10 to 20 grand, let's say, right? And it's, that's a big chunk, right? Some towns charge their users, we won't get into it, about, you know, to make the money back on the permitting and things, and using the process. But I, every time we have a position, you know me, every time we have something, I look at the efficiency piece, and I just want more data to make those decisions.
See how many.
Those are difficult decisions that make, but they're ones that are coming.
So Lonnie, you're, you'd be able to, because I'd want to see footprints too, to understand how many people start and end the process without completing it?
Yeah, right.
That type of thing?
Yeah, so.
Yeah, that abandon it because it gets too frustrating, right?
Well, the only part that we're assisting is, is getting is the data entry.
Right.
As far as the report, I don't know much about the administrative side of that.
Yep.
I've only used the front end for permanent lists. So.
So is that.
But their support department will definitely give, you can just call them up, they're, they're very helpful.
Right.
I mean, they should probably have that stuff stocked.
Yes, they do, that's part of the platform. That's what, but I'm just saying, this week, you know, as I'm throwing all this old stuff out, and all these offices are empty.
Yeah.
I mean, it's, you know.
To your point, though, the best decisions are data-driven, right? And not engineer, so.
That's the way to do it.
And especially, it's been hard, you know, with this municipality, this tradition, and there are things that have been done a certain way for many, many years. That's the overhead that's killing us, right? And that's people's retirement from 20 years ago we're still paying. So that's the sort of stuff we got to look at. And doing those counts of people coming in for business would be, would be key.
All right, the, the only, the only issue left is future meeting dates. We have two Monday dates in August, August 1st and August 29th. Thank you.
I can't do those, I have to move back.
So I picked the 1st and the 29th because Mike wants Monday, which is cool. But, and I have emailed the other boards, I picked the 29th for now because it's the fifth Monday, okay? After that, we're on our own. It's going to be a shootout.
We may have to go, we'll have to figure it out.
Because the next one is Labor Day, so just assume the 29th is like our September 1st meeting. But I knew that one would be free, so I had Ellen book it for us, and I didn't ask about the first. I just said, do it, and then we can apologize. But I did already send the email out to the regular boards that meet on that day to say, switch with us or, you know, go into our brand-new conference room that doesn't exist yet downstairs.
All right. Anything else? I would look for a motion to adjourn.
So, second.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.